We'll call the meeting to order. I'd like to invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is in my land of the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the freedom of justice for all.
As you were coming in, you probably noticed Old City Hall going down, so that's been entertaining, Mike and Bruce all afternoon. Roll call, please.
Garrick.
Here.
Grinberg.
Here.
Pepcorn.
Here.
Strand.
Here.
Mahoney.
Here.
Health. Rachel Johnson has been promoted to the Public Health Nursing Coordinator at the Fargo Cass Public Health. She first worked at the Fargo Cass Public Health Clinic before moving to the nursing division, where she worked in maternal-child health program, adult health program, and school nursing. That's been a promotion for her, right? Finance. Ken's group did it again. The Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting has been awarded to the City of Fargo Finance Department by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. This is the 20th year in a row in which they have received this recognition. This includes Jenica Fonigan, Jamie Bullock, Megan Zaraki, and Jess Hoom. You guys have been doing this all the time, right, Ken? Do you want to change it once in a while, or no?
Good mix.
Yeah, that's a good mix. Good job. Library. The library has added child's board games to its circulating collection. The games, which are geared for children ages 12 and younger, can be checked out the same way as a book or DVD by anybody who has a valid public library card. There are several interesting programs and events happening at the library in the next couple of weeks, including the Northport Classics Book Club to discuss Patricia Highsmith's classic, "The Talented Mr. Ripley." The choice of your own book club for kids will discuss "The Cardboard Kingdom" by Chad Sel and yoga classes. And the annual Lego Mania Design Contest for Kids is going to be held, as well as an open writing session for teens and adults in the Northport Library as part of the Northern Narratives Writing Project. So you're doing stuff up north, right, Tim? Getting everything going? Yep, thank you. Because now you've got entertainment on how to tear down a building at the regular library. Yep, okay. Police. Members of the police department rang the Salvation Army kettlebells last week, and on Sunday, several officers took part in the Cops and Kids Holiday Shopping Event, helping children shop for gifts for their loved ones. Chief Todd said he can see how much it means to the children and their families, who otherwise could not have much for Christmas, and the community truly benefits from these types of initiatives. Planning. The Fargo Project and the city's Public Arts Master Plan are highlighted, along with Oklahoma City and Indianapolis, in the December issue of the National American Planning Association Magazine. This article will be posted on the Fargo, City Fargo website. And Nicole tells me that's a prestigious magazine to get into, and very many cities do, and it highlights all the hard work on that project, right? Yeah, good. Planning and inspection departments are working with a consultant on a new permit management software, which integrates the intake, review, and case management process for the city building permits and development cases. The software is expected to be implemented by mid-2019. And does that mean it will have speedier permits? Is that what's going to come out of that? So people can come in, and a lot of the process will be much quicker? Good, okay. Wastewater. With the expansion of the wastewater treatment facility, total power consumption is expected to significantly increase, which will result in a change of how electricity is distributed within the plant. A central generation station will be built to focus on conserving power and reducing long-term operating costs. The station will allow the facility to operate with favorable utility rates and incentives by eliminating peaks and establishing a consistent predictable electric demand. The new station will house four natural gas-powered electric generators, and during the electric outage or disaster, the plant will be able to run at full capacity on three of the four generators and will be connected to natural gas distribution system, thus providing reliability. The generators are also capable of running on biogas or methane, which are byproducts of the wastewater treatment process, resulting in additional reductions in operating costs. On completion of the expansion, Tony Garrick, the plant could see up to $350,000 a year in electric cost savings. That's significant. And the new electric system we constructed in phase would be operational by the fall of 2019. Tim did a good job on that one. Go on to regular agenda. Can I have an approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Wait, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, any changes? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the December 3, 2018 regular meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I will move items 1 through 55, with the exception of item 31, which I would like to have a discussion around, item 57 on the regular agenda.
31 and 57?
Yeah, 31 would go into 57 on the regular agenda.
Oh, 57, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Strand.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye. So you have my recommendations for the Historic Preservation Commission. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand.
Yes.
Garrick.
Yes.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye. Recommendation to approve the North Dakota Department of Transportation, Section 5 through 39 Transit Grant Agreement. Julie Baumann to explain. And Matt as well, or both of you?
The grant application that we put in October 10 is the grant agreement that you see in front of you now. So when we applied for the grant, brought it before the commission to approve the local share, I went ahead and put the application in. And what it's for is to renovate the GTC, which was built in 1984. We had a nice renovation in 2004, but it sure needs some work now. So DOT awarded the $1.591 million, and with local match, it brings us up to just a little bit under $2 million. So happy to answer any questions you have.
So Julie, all you're coming forward to us today is to approve the grant that you received, but
Correct.
we have to rebid it because you didn't have enough bidders? Is that the same thing?
We just had one, yes.
Okay.
And we felt that we needed, especially with the federal rules, more competition on that, so we're rebidding.
Questions of the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I am
Grinberg.
I'm going to suggest we table this motion tonight, and not so much that, you know, we need to be denying a grant, but as I look at, you know, the grant application here and some of my discussions with Mr. Grubb, I just, if I could use the analogy, wanted to make sure the left hand knows what the right hand is doing from a standpoint of that space. I know there's some structural issues that need to be addressed, but my concern, I'd call it, is if we spend a few million dollars on this facility, how does that sync with our overall master plan? And down the road, if we want to have a relocation of this operation, we're kind of locked in, at least from a financial commitment perspective. So with the consent agenda and the rejecting of the bids, I would suggest this be tabled and put before the finance committee and have a little more discussion around it, a on the scope of the work, because I understand the structural issues are real, we have to fix those, but if we're going to end up spending millions of dollars, we're locked in, in my opinion, at least for a number of years, from a financial perspective. And so that's what I just want to, you know, caution, you know, the commission tonight is just, you know, let's have a deeper dive on this, understand what we're trying to do, because I don't see any of that detail here of the actual costs.
Mr. Pepcorn?
So, Mr. Chair, this is for Julie. Mr. Chair, is there a time consideration for this? I guess that's the other thing, you don't want to jeopardize if this is grant money, so maybe you can talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, if you're speaking to, how long is the money available? Is that Commissioner Pepcorn, is that what you're asking?
Right, yes.
Okay. Yeah, the money would be available, they make awards, this just happened to be money that got turned back and wasn't awarded in the first cycle, so this was money we didn't expect. But it would go away and be reallocated to someone else, probably within the next couple of months if we didn't.
So to me, that's the concern, Mr. Chair, that it's an opportunity to get grant money to upgrade. But if you don't mind, maybe Jim, I don't know if Jim Gilmore's here today, but to talk about the parking, we have some serious structural issues, and I know that's kind of a separate part of this, but I mean, that's almost emergency measure, so if you could just talk about that, and maybe it's a totally separate thing, but I think we should talk about that, since isn't that kind of what you had in mind anyway? That was on the consent agenda, so.
This grant is for the building above ground, all the different things that need to be done there.
Correct.
Mr. Gilmore's going to talk about is some structural issues that are part of a TIF, is that correct? That are below grade.
Right, that's my understanding, yes. We had an assessment done of all of that, that included the underground parking, as well as the above-deck, and that study came out, and then KJ's the one that did that. They brought in structural engineers from Briarly, which is a multinational corporation. They are the ones that build tunnels under bridges or under rivers and things, and so they did retain them to come in and take a look at it, and they confirmed the recommendations that came out of the KJ study. So yes, there are structural issues, yes, and they do need to be repaired. Question is, who's going to
And then just the other thing for the commission, the federal grant is given as money, the city will put in $300,000, so the total cost we get out of there are close to $2 million?
Close to $2 million, yeah. It'll be $400,000 that the city puts in. It's $388,750, I think.
And if we didn't have the grant from the feds, then that would have to be made up by city funds?
Correct.
But you have already budgeted them out that we're going to match this grant?
We did, and I brought it forward October 10 to have it approved.
Mr. Grant.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to ask the same questions. I'm not sure if it would be you, Julie, or Bruce Scrub, or Hoom, or maybe Commissioner Grinberg, but what discussions took place for this to get into this year's budget?
Well, probably about two years ago, we started the planning process in recognizing that this needed to be done. We do a deck overlay every five to six years, and what that consists of is, we have, they route out the different joints and concrete and things that need to be repaired. I'm not an engineer, so I'm not going to pretend like I am, but they come into the whole deck, the whole bus deck. This time around, we had the, there's a, it's a drainage duct that we had relocated because the buses were going over it and it was degrading, so our grant covered moving that as well. And so that happens, like I said, about every five years that we do that. So recognizing that this facility needed to have some updates done, in the flooring is buckling in some areas, tripping hazards, pedestrian areas, things like that, and the last time we did anything with the building was 2004, we put it in our plans, so it's in our planning documents. And what we have to do, and Michael is here for MetroCog if he wants to speak in detail to it, but it has to be put in the plans and approved, and the state has to approve it, the feds have to approve it, and then it goes through, it goes through local approvals as well, the Transit Technical Committee, through MetroCog, and then that goes to their policy board, and then it comes forward. So it's kind of a lengthy process where we finally get to apply for the grant.
And I think Commissioner Garrick, at one time when we talked about applying for grants, we wanted to make sure we understood which grants we'd applied for and have money aside for that. I mean, I think one time you talked about that, we have a lot of grant writing out there, but what is our commitment? This has always been planned as a grant, we may have to come forward it, and in fact, you put it in our budget for this year.
I did, yes.
But Tony Grinberg asked a question, is, I think, was that, is the GTC going to be our long-term spot for this? Have you always been planning to update this, both above ground and below ground? So if we apply for this grant, and is this going to be our long-term goal to rehab this area, or has there been other plans to move somewhere else and kind of drop this rehab?
What, well, what we had was a facility study that was done, and it just wrapped up, and the recommendations that came out of that, and it looked at various locations in the downtown area, and what we wanted to do was stay within about a quarter mile of the existing facility, because Morehead brings four of their routes over, and they transfer with Fargo. So if you're going to go further west, or further north, or further south, they would have to adjust theirs, and that would impact them negatively, as well as the riders that are coming between the two cities. So we looked at that, and I have that map here on what we looked at for sites that would be alternative to the downtown area. So when those sites were examined, it was taken into consideration access to them, the size of them, whether they're an existing parking lot, does the city own it, would we have to acquire the property? Any of those types of considerations were all taken in when they were looking at it. So it was decided that the existing facility had the square footage to accommodate what we needed. As far as life of the facility, FTA says it's 40 years, it was constructed in 1984, rehabbed in 2004. Our goal would be to have it probably another 10, 12 years, something to that effect, so get it up to really being more functional. That would be the goal of this grant.
Again, I mean, I just thank you, Commissioner Garrick, for reinforcing my point. You know, I'm not against this, I'm just saying, it's kind of backwards. We're accepting the money, we're rejecting a bid. We, I said it on the metro transit presentation, and it's more than, it's a very comprehensive project, and so to vote for grant money without knowing what the project is, I think as commissioners, you need to know that, whether that's through a formal committee at the city, because the sense is that this hasn't really been vetted through staff and/or any of our committees. And so we're kind of obligating ourselves to do this. We accept the grant tonight without knowing some of the basics, you know, about what we're trying to accomplish. I get the structural, if it's a safety issue, we got to address it, but
How's it going to go out for bid if we don't know what it's bid about? They already went out for bid, the reason we rejected, there's only one bid, did it, federal rules say, one bidder, so why do we not know what we're going to do?
Yeah, I was just going to, like, you know, we do actually have, part of the facility study that was done, they had done some real top-level preliminary design, if you will, such as relocating some of the pieces of the GTC, how the buses would come in and out, so that design work is already pretty much done. That RFP that we put out for the bid build, the design bid build, is separate from the grant. The grant is only funding it, and our design bid build was for an amount of right around $2.2 million, and that does not include the underground parking area. That's a separate, I wanted to say right around $800,000. This grant also, I'm not sure if the commissioners remember or not, but several years ago, with municipal court coming in, we actually have an $800,000 buyback. That timeframe is coming up to an end here, I believe, 2019, 2020, and we would be able to tack that money onto this grant and satisfy that debt that we owe to FTA as well. So to reject this bid, I understand exactly what you're saying, Commissioner Grinberg, but with the FTA life for the GTC facility, we would have to buy that, we would have to buy that out from the FTA if we were to move or relocate it. The $1.59 million that we got in this grant doesn't cover any building of a new facility, and the last facility that we built was the MTG back in 2007, which came in just over $7 million. So we're talking a pretty substantial amount of money to, you know, relocate the GTC and build it somewhere else, definitely probably more than five to seven years from now. So this grant money would just help us get the facility where it needs to be, remove some of the tripping hazards, some of the pedestrian safety issues that we've identified through our processes, and get it operating where it needs to be, so that we can make those longer-term decisions for where GTC will be in 15, 20 years. I hope that makes sense.
So if you delayed it for two weeks, you're saying we would lose it because we're into the new year, or what would happen?
No, we wouldn't lose the money if we delayed it for two weeks, if you want to table it for two weeks. It would just put the RFP that we're going to reissue in January back a little bit, so that construction process that we would like to start sooner than later, just because it's been neglected for so long.
I'll move, we table this decision for two weeks, and at the next meeting, we have a full presentation on the full scope of the project, what you're intending, and not just the grant piece, so we get a full scope. And I would ask Mr. Redlinger and Grubb to work with you, and I also like planning involved, so that if there's not been any conversations, how does this fit within our downtown plans?
Right, yeah. So I agree, we can do that, that's not a problem.
There's a second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, just to go with that, but then if we could also talk about the parking underneath, and, but there are some
Gilmore's going to come and talk about that a little bit.
And I, that is legitimate, where there's like a concern, public safety concern, and so I support, look, knowing more about that, but I think that the other issue is something that we should act on right now, because I think that's a very serious thing, and if we don't change it. Julie, can I ask you one question? So you talked about the deck, is some of that included in your, in that project, correct? The water sealing of the deck, so that keeps water from going down below, and that's part of the issue that we're having with our, with the parking ramp?
Right, right. We did do a lot of repairs during that deck overlay, there was a lot of sealant and stuff done. I can forward you the final report, that might help clarify what we're talking about. That's not a problem.
But to me, it all goes together, like Tony's talking about, but there's some things that are more immediate concerns than others, but I do think it's a good thing to table it and get
Commissioner Garrick, bring up the other question, is item 31 is to reject the old bid, so wouldn't you almost want to discuss that at the same time? Because you are rejecting, suggesting rejecting the old bid
Right.
because they only had one bidder. So if you look at your 31, that's really the proposal, is to reject the bid?
Correct, and rebid it.
Okay.
So you got two motions, correct?
We would have to take another motion.
Yeah, yeah, correct, I agree.
So we'll vote on the first motion, which is to table this grant, and have a presentation next meeting.
Next meeting.
Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Strand.
No.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Moved reject 31.
There's a second.
Second.
31, reject the bid, if anybody wants to.
Has it stated on the consent?
Yep.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye. Okay, I think we can go to public hearings, then.
That's me.
You're up here anyway, so let's get going.
I might as well keep going.
Propose increase in MAT, Paratransit Service Agency Rate effective January 1, 2019. Julie, to explain as well.
Yeah, thank you. We have an agency rate that is part of our paratransit services that only applies to individuals that are residents of skilled nursing facilities, taking a ride on paratransit to a medical appointment. It's a pretty narrowly defined ride that we're talking about, and we are able to charge the full cost of the ride. And the last time we changed that rate, it was $25. We're suggesting, well, because that's the new cost, $38 one-way. Because what happens with residents of skilled nursing facilities, they are, they pay a fee, of course, to be there, and it includes transportation for them, so if they put it on public transportation, then we're entitled to get the same rate that a private transportation would. So it doesn't get used very often, but it is something that we did implement.
So you're just trying to get the same rate private gets as well?
That's correct.
And is it covered by their insurance, or covered by what?
It's covered by, it's either Medicaid, Medicare, whatever it is they're paying to stay there, or their facility, it could be private, but it's part of the monthly costs that they pay, the resident.
Is anyone present who wishes to speak to this rate change? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak? That will close the public hearing to have a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I ask you a question, Julie?
Sure.
Here's what I wish we would have. We would have an Uber for people with wheelchairs and things like that, for all the nonprofits, if we combined all of our efforts in Cass and Clay County, do you think that could ever come to be?
I think it is a great idea, and I think that coordinating with other transportation agencies is at the top of our list. So we see it working in other areas, we call it first mile, last mile. So there's public transportation agencies that have agreements with Uber, Lyft, some of the newer ones too, and they, it's almost like a feeder, so they pick up people with disabilities, anybody that wants to ride, and they either bring them to a transit route, or they bring them to their final destination, but it's a partnership, and that is something we're exploring, trying to
Is there any place in the U.S. that's doing that now or not yet?
Oh, yeah, there are, they're on the East Coast. I know, I think it was in Pennsylvania is what the article I was reading, but I can get you more information on that.
Because to me, if we combine the efforts of like the senior rides, paratransit, but also all the nonprofits, it's a huge fleet, but if, but what we need is the technology for all of them to all work together. So I'll give you an example. So with my son now, he goes to the VTC, but we have to give him a ride there and a ride home every day. Well, that's, if there was a transportation, and ours is good, but it's a 15-minute window, and there's no one riding with them, and so, but I do think there's a way, anyway, so that's my dream, and so if we can do that, I think that would be awesome, and I think there's other places that we could copy, but
Oh, yeah.
So if, and I know Tony's the, Tony's the mat guy, but if there's any way I can get involved, I would love to have us do that, because I think it would be a great service for lots, there's lots of people that would use it, seniors, people that get injured and that are in a wheelchair, there's lots of things where people would use that. So anyway, that's my, not, I'm sure you didn't come here to get more work to do, but I just think
We're already working on it, so that's okay. Anytime
For our towns, I think this would be, it would be a great asset. It's like a lot of the other things we do. A lot of people come here because of our services, and I think this is one of those things. So anyway, I apologize for getting too far off the
It's a discussion of the service, and
It is.
We don't know all the hurdles that sit out there, so it's good, Dave, that you tell us about that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand.
Yes.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye. Nicole Crutchfield, Amendments to the Community Development Block Grant, Five-Year Consolidated Plan and Annual Action Plans Program. And this is just information, we don't even have to vote on it, huh?
Correct, and open up for a public hearing for public comment. So this is just information for tonight, and then I'll be back in front of you two weeks from now to ask for action on these changes. And basically, in summary, anytime, so it's part of the HUD program, we have a five-year plan and a one-year plan, and the five-year plan's called the consolidated plan, and the one-year plan is called the action plan. And anytime we amend those, we have to do a public notice process and then inform that back to HUD. And so what constitutes as a need for an amendment is anytime an activity has ended, or if, say we ended an activity prematurely, or didn't, project didn't go as planned, or if we're adding a new activity, and if there's any change in that project, more than $50,000. And so, so we, in doing some internal review of our 2018 and 2019 and 2017 programs, saw some places where we needed to do amendments. And so in front of you tonight is kind of just some paperwork about canceling three of the projects that ended up not coming into fruition in 2018. And then we're asking to expand our slum and blight study, so we can do a little bit further outreach with home rebuilds or home repairs. And then the last one is to add a new project with the Washington School, and that was, and also with Gladys Ray, to do some expansion plans, discussions with Gladys Ray, and also Ray, to do some expansion plans, discussions with Gladys Ray. And also, Washington Elementary School came forward to us as part of our social service fund application. I guess historically, they've received CDBG monies in years past. They are in a low to moderate income neighborhood, and that's a, one of the criteria of HUD money. And typically, they do fundraising or, you know, kind of PTA work with their playgrounds. And so they're asking for some assistance. So this is just saying that we're planning to do the work, that we're interested in doing the work. We still have to do the full vetting, but if you end up approving this, then that would give us the go-ahead to tell HUD that we're interested in doing this work. But the first and foremost is to add in the paper, notifying people of the public hearing tonight and, and hearing if there's any people from the audience that have any comments.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to the Amendments to the Community Development Grant? Anyone who wishes to speak? Hearing none. I guess you've had your public hearing, and best of luck. I was glad you're redirecting this to defining areas to put it.
Sure.
So this will help with a lot of blight and issues in the community?
Yes. And then if, those that are listening, if they have questions, we'll still have an open comment period for the next 10, set 10 days. They can contact the Planning Department if they have any comments. And if you have any questions about what we're doing or activities on these questions, I'm here to either answer questions tonight or in two weeks as well.
Mr. Strand, you guys read this as well, Kennedy?
We're in the process of vetting it.
Yeah, those will go in front of the community development. So part of their changes go in front of Planning Commission and Community Development Committee. And so the CD Committee will act on this tomorrow.
Okay. Item 59, Presentation Discussion Regarding Seventeenth Avenue and South Corridor Study. Jeremy Gordon to present. You have more people tonight.
That's right, I brought one, one with me. Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. This study is a long time in the, in the making. We've known for a number of years, there's operational issues with this stretch of road. The study limits were the entire width of Fargo from Fifth Street to west of the Home Depot, west of 45th Street. We really, we really had four things in mind when we wanted to commission a study through MetroCog. And really, it's, it's the, the first thing is the congestion in the Prairiewood area. There's four, there's three four-way stops that really get people backed up going east and west at peak hours. The second item would be the stretch, well, really the intersection of 45th Street. At Seventeenth Avenue, that gets to be very overcapacity at times at nights and weekends. And then the stretch of road from 42nd to 45th is kind of an odd configuration, just four lanes with no turn lanes. And then lastly, this has been identified as a bike gap in our city network. It's really a gaping hole. There's really no bike facilities in this area to go east and west. So with that, about two years ago, we put an RFP together through MetroCog, and we did a number of interviews, and we selected KLJ. Mike Bittner here was a project manager. We're in the final throes of this. Just like Nicole, we aren't asking for any approval tonight. We want to get this in front of you and then come back probably in four weeks, hopefully for final approval. So this has been in front of Public Works Committee and the Planning Commission. It's been received fairly, fairly well. So with that, I'll let Mike go through his slideshow, and I'll be answering any questions after that.
Okay.
So as Jeremy mentioned, our study limits are Fifth Street to 51st Street. So all of Seventeenth Avenue through the city of Fargo. And so depending on where you normally drive, Seventeenth Avenue really dictates your opinion of what this corridor looks and feels like. So on the west end, you've got West Acres, you've got big box stores. It feels like a commercial corridor. But as you start to transition to the east, it feels more and more like a neighborhood, to the point where, as you get all the way to the east, you have less than 3,000 cars per day, which is less than, you know, 400 times less than what you have on the west side. So you can really see that this really evolves from a commercial corridor to a local corridor. And so at the beginning of the project, we decided this corridor was going through an identity crisis. Now, what is it trying to be when it grows up? And we look at the traffic volumes, and we've seen older studies say, well, this is a great opportunity to help alleviate pressure from the adjacent arterials. But recent planning efforts really identified this corridor, as Jeremy mentioned, as a great opportunity for an east-west bike corridor. You can see, we've got three major regional parks, and we've got three different schools, along with a variety of other parks as well. It also has perfect proximity in the middle of the city of Fargo. And so this was identified as an active living corridor, active living street in GO-2030, and one of the top 10 bike gaps. So as we looked at our approach, we wanted to start from square one. What is the needs and the opportunities? What are the solutions? And what are the implementation plan? And so we wanted to make sure we had a lot of, of really good public involvement. What we found at our first meeting is we had over 100 people attend, and there was a lot of skepticism of the, just the planning process in general. There were a lot of people there, because of past planning efforts, you know, really concerned that we were going to develop alternatives without their participation. But as they were brought along through the process, they could really see that we started from zero with the opportunity to have a do-nothing, but really give them a lot of choices for different improvement strategies. And so we thought maybe after that first meeting, we'd lose some of that momentum. But what we found is that people were engaged all the way through. They really wanted to see all the different types of improvements that we had throughout this process. And so not only do we have your traditional meetings, but we also had a really fun bike audit, where we got people out on their bikes. Media loved it. We, we went around the corridor to look for opportunities for improvement. We also had a 10-to-1 online versus in-person engagement. We had a lot of good activities to keep people engaged that didn't want to come up to the meetings. We tried to use every strategy we could think of to keep people engaged in the process. We had VMS signs, variable message signs along the corridor to say, you know, here's the studies coming up. We used paid Facebook ads. We used letters directly to all the property owners along the corridor. You can see that long list, you know, Neighborhood Association, et cetera, et cetera. And so we took all this great information and a lot of our technical analysis, and we developed a suite of improvements for the different segments of the corridor. So the first segment I want to talk about is 38th Street to 51st Street. So that's kind of what you'd associate with your commercial area. And as Jeremy mentioned, 45th Street has been identified as an issue. If you've ever tried to make a left turn heading westbound at that intersection, typically takes a couple green cycles, green lights. You queue for several hundred feet, you block driveways. So our first improvement was to add a second westbound left turn lane. The second improvement was on the west side. We have a lot of friction with the two driveways to the north and the south. We have, normally that median's not closed. So we have a lot of cars turning on to and off of that location. It created a lot of, of increased crash potential at that location. The second segment that we looked at on this segment was 42nd Street to 45th Street. So we have an almost five-mile corridor, and almost 50% of all crashes occurred on this small half-mile segment. And what we found is that, you can see in the picture on the screen, is we have someone trying to turn left. There's no left turn lane. We have a lot of rear-end crashes along that segment. So we wanted to look at what we could do in the short term to really mitigate some of those crashes, since we had such a high percentage. And so one concept we had that was a really low-cost improvement that just involved striping was to repurpose that second westbound through lane into a center-left turn lane. And so what this allows us to do is to reduce that rear-end crash potential, potentially reducing overall crash likelihood by 50%. And so in terms of traffic flow, what we found is that all but one hour of the day, there's more traffic headed eastbound. And also, with the two eastbound lanes, it allowed us to keep that, that double left turn lane at southbound at 45th Street. So we can move traffic pretty effectively with this revised configuration. We also wanted to look at the future, though. That, that's, you know, we're talking about today, would that work today? And so we looked at projecting traffic into the future. And so we looked at a variety of different, you know, committed growth. And this was about a year ago when we looked at the growth projections. You can see some of these pockets, these polygons have already been built up. But we also looked at opportunities for redevelopment, Best Buy, for example. And so we found that there was a lot of potential growth that we just look at five, 10, 15, 20 years into the future, and that configuration doesn't really work once you move past some of those higher growth rates. And so we did look at what are some of the improvements we would make if we started to look at, you know, when useful life of this corridor has been expired, you know, we want to reconfigure, rebuild. Can we look at some new access management techniques to improve the safety? This is kind of a slider of what it'd look like if we were to add access management, and then also provide the amount of capacity we would need for this segment of the corridor. So you can see this is two through lanes in each direction, a median and a center-left turn lane. And so in combination, these two improvements would allow us to have efficient traffic flow into the future based on those traffic projections, but also further improve safety with that improvement. So our next segment is 25th Street to 38th Street. As we get, start to see the context really change as we move east of 38th Street. But as Jeremy mentioned, we have four, we have three always-stop controls, 38th, 34th, and 32nd Street. And so it takes several extra minutes of time to get through this area if you've ever been there during peak periods. And so what happens is you get, if you can see in the picture on the screen, we have almost a 20-to-1 in this picture, or 10-to-1 on this picture, mainline 17th Street versus side street. So if you come on a side street, you'll be able to turn right away. If you're on mainline, you have to wait, and you have to wait, and you have to wait. And a lot of times, it's for nothing. And so what we were seeing is an increased crash potential with cars that were sick of waiting, that they'd roll through the stop sign, you know, they were frustrated. We'd also saw, you know, people would pick up their speed after they felt like they waited for a long period of time unnecessarily. And so that kind of aligns with national studies. And so if we have these always-stop controls to really improve pedestrian safety and also slow speeds, it's kind of failing on both accounts there. We also looked at ped bike. This was kind of our biggest pocket where it'd be the most challenging to fit a bike facility. So this is a video of a GoPro on my helmet biking through the area. This is during peak hours. And so there's a couple clips on this that I almost get run off the road because people are just frustrated. They don't, you know, they waited several minutes at this always-stop control. I'm not going to wait to drive behind this biker for a couple more blocks. So this is a video of the improvement strategy that we came through via our technical analysis, but also supported with our public involvement. So the first thing I'm going to show is the support, kind of our, our combined criteria to analyze. So it's a technical score, community score, and Study Review Committee, which is kind of our, our technical team. And so what we found first is that bike facilities, we had over 75% of people wanted high-quality bike facilities, not just normal bike facilities, but high-quality bike facilities. And so this was pretty surprising when we first got the results, because at our first meeting, we had a lot of people that didn't seem to support any type of solution along the corridor. But as they started to see the types of benefits and the way that you can make this a little bit more livable, we started to see an overwhelming amount of people support this. And so we had several hundred people reply to our survey, and we also asked them, where do they live? Do you live along the corridor? Are you a commuter? And over 85% of the people lived along the corridor. And so that's people along this area that want and support that facility. And so here's kind of a representation of what that would look like from an aerial view. And so you can see these high-quality, this two-way cycle track is what they're called, our two-way bike facility on one side. It allows you to have enough space to fit this within the curbs to provide that two-way facility plus a buffer. And so these high-quality facilities with the buffers have been proven to reduce crashes by 30 to 40%. And so right now, at West Gateway Circle, we're showing a pedestrian crossing. And this is, so we're basically heading westbound as we move along this. But West Gateway Circle is kind of a, a gap in the pedestrian crossing areas. We have obviously the golf course to the south, a park to the north, in many neighborhoods. As you look at the screen, the top of the screen is do-nothing, and the bottom is our build improvements. And this is not different traffic volumes. These are the exact same traffic volumes. The key difference here is we have different traffic control. And again, at the beginning, we showed the support for the different traffic control solutions. And so the most supported was this roundabout, really a corridor of roundabouts for this section. So you can see 84% reduction in delays. So you can see at the top of the screen, that's your delays. The bottom is how traffic is moving efficiently. But that also comes with the, yep.
If you could back up just a second with those portable planters, do those come out in winter?
They can, and I can, so if, if you look at this, at the picture at the beginning, and I can move this back there. We had a couple different options. We weren't sure exactly what that would look like. And so you could do the portable planters, and you could pick them up and move them. There was some concern of, you know, do they get hit? Are they going to stay pretty? So you could kind of see the removable delineators, or even a raised median you could look at if you wanted to just make sure that that felt like it was separated.
I guess my, what I'm curious is snow removal.
Sure. So it is wide enough. It's about almost 12 feet wide once you count the gutter pants. So it is wide enough to be able to effectively remove snow on that segment of the roadway.
So even where the planters would be, or that little intermediary, that would get cleaned as well?
Sure. And you could even remove those during, during winter seasons and still have your effective three-plus-foot buffer in that area.
Thank you.
Of course. So we're back to the roundabout. And again, you know, one of the things we heard from a lot of people in the public was, they were concerned that if we made this roadway too efficient, it'd feel like a highway. And that was something that they really didn't want to see as a neighborhood roadway. And so the reason why the roundabout gained some traction was it's a natural traffic calming tool. So you actually slow traffic down. It's been proven, if you put these in concession, you can actually slow traffic through the area. And so you kind of had your cake and you ate it too. You were able to effectively move traffic more efficiently, but you still were able to keep traffic speeds at a reasonable clip. So the next graphic we're going to show is a mini roundabout again, but how this operates and why this is different. So roundabouts have been studied along this corridor in the past, but they were discarded because they had such substantial impacts. You know, your typical roundabout in the city of Fargo is pretty big. This is a fully traversable, meaning you can drive over the top of it if you need to for larger vehicles. And so it's, it's large, it's high enough that a car doesn't want to, but low enough that a truck or bus could go over the top. And so this allows us to make the roundabout smaller without impacting a lot of properties along the corridors. You can see, really the goal with all these, with this improvement is we're able to fit everything but a small piece of the corners within the existing curb to keep costs down. So at our 35th Street, we have three-quarters accidents, which is just another way to help improve safety. We also wanted to make sure that we incorporated good transit facilities as part of this process so we could have this, you know, achieve that goal of GO-2030, of being an active living corridor.
If I might again, are there some signals or manage, traffic management for the bikes in those roundabout areas? Or how does, I mean, how do the cars know there's a bike there or not, or who yields to who?
So we have it separated on the south side. So if you kind of see it right here. So they basically get pushed closer to the sidewalks. You can see on the west side, that's your bike facility within green. And so you, you almost treat them similar to a pedestrian because you basically bring them to that same crossing location. And so they're next to the road, and which increases the visibility, which gives you that 30 to 40% safety benefit. But then at an intersection, we want to keep them out of that, the circulating area. So they treat it more like a pedestrian.
And the car will yield technically to the bike?
Yep.
I guess I'm, what I'm wondering is, if you've got a bike coming from the same direction as a car, will they see each other?
Which direction?
Like, so they're coming from the top down, they're, the car, you know, you've got that gray car going to turn right there.
Yep.
Say you've got a bike coming in that same bike path, will they see each other safe, safely?
Yes. I mean, so it depends. So since it's a bidirectional facility, you've got bikes going both ways. And so there's different, you know, rules of the road as you're coming out of a roundabout versus when you're coming into a roundabout. So obviously, the biker must yield to a vehicle coming out of the roundabout, but a vehicle coming out the side street would have the yield which would allow people to go through. And so studies have actually found that roundabouts reduce crashes by about 30% versus traffic signals.
For bikes?
Yeah, bikes and pedestrians. And so other studies have showed it's kind of neutral. And so it's, the one thing we know for certain is it's pretty close to similar to a traffic signal. I think that some people still feel uncomfortable under that circumstance. But because a trap, you know, a roundabout, you know, makes you slow down, brings you out to the intersection, makes you fully aware of what's coming in every direction, we found that the visibility really improves for different types of transportation. So the last segment is Fifth Street to 25th Street. And so at this point, we've really connected the entire system. We have, you know, a shared use path on the far west side. We provided those high-quality two-way bike facilities on the section from 25th to 38th Street. So now we've got one final link to make that east-west connection through the city of Fargo. And as you can see, we once again had a high support for high-quality bike facilities, whether that be a cycle track or even bike lanes. And so the solution, again, was a two-way cycle track with a buffer. But we also added in some pedestrian improvements, one at Ascension Health, looked at a raised crosswalk. We also, with supplemental beacons. And then at South High School, we also looked at some beacon improvements just to help people get across the street. So now that we have our package of improvements, we wanted to look at the timing of these improvements. And so the number one thing that fed into our, our timing plan was when do these roads need to be rebuilt? And if you add some of these improvements, if you're already going to be reconstructing the road, some of them are kind of neutral costs as you go into a reconstruction project. Some are certainly still additions. But the key with this, the segment between 38th Street to Fifth Street is that roadway does need to be reconstructed. It is in, it has had some recent overlays on certain segments, but currently it's in pretty poor structural conditions, and it does need to be rebuilt in the coming years. And so as part of those projects, you could start to look to add in some of these different improvements as part of that process. At 38th Street to 51st Street, though that road is still in very good condition. So if you saw at the beginning, that's the one place we had kind of a phased implementation. We had some improvements for today and some improvements for tomorrow. And so you can kind of see in this final graphic, we pretty much have all of the improvements in the short term, zero to five years. And then we have that, that west segment. Do we want to widen? Do we need to widen? And I think that's always kind of the most mysterious part of these planning studies is the traffic forecasting. And you're so, you're so tied to your assumptions. And so having good assumptions, and so revisiting those in the future to make sure that they're still good, is kind of the way we tabled those, that west side improvements. So, enough for any questions.
Questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple, so there's a couple of sections where there's parking now. Will, will there, will some of it be lost because of the reconstruct, or the reconfiguration?
Yep, we would remove all parking along the corridor. We did a parking study as a part of this, and we found that we had, we collected six times during a normal day, and then we collected four times during the weekend, and our parking occupancy was 1%.
I guess I would be concerned, you asked a lot of questions about bike and all that stuff, but did you ask the neighbors if they were in favor of losing their parking? Because I'm guessing if you would ask the neighbor, most neighborhoods, they like having parking at least on one side of the street. That's, especially in those areas where it's the, the residential part, I, I think that, and I'll just give you my own personal opinion, those, there are bumpouts there now. Those are awful. The, I don't know if you've driven in that area. And I do think that the roundabouts, that will be great, that's great. But I'm just concerned about the, I, I think if you go back to those neighborhoods and ask them about losing parking, I think you're going to get some pushback. That's just my, my two cents. Thank you.
So as part of the process, we did give a variety of, so we're kind of showing the highest scores. So we did say, all right, here's an alternative that doesn't impact your parking. Here's an alternative that did. But really, to keep costs reasonable without widening and hitting those nice trees along the corridor. the corridor, to fit it in, you either had parking or no bike facility. And so we found that, just because really, even the one percent of parking we found, I think, we associated with the construction that was going on. And almost everybody has side-street parking on the adjacent streets.
I think the question you might be commenting on Seventeenth is you come underneath by West Acres. There's an area in which we put an island, and then people could park. Are they going to lose their parking spots?
That area would still be there.
Where condos are there and people have townhomes.
Yeah, that, yeah, we wouldn't widen outside of there. So that area still, we consider that outside the curbs because that went into their property.
I could see from that stop sign to Twenty-Fifth, I don't see a lot of people parking on that street. Any questions?
Quick question. When was, what year did we redo that section from Twenty-Fifth to the interstate, particularly in the Prairiewood area, the last, you know, those bumpouts?
Well...
Because I remember...
So we did a smaller corridor study just in the Prairiewood area, like in two thousand five, two thousand six. And the recommendation was to put in a couple of roundabouts. And there was a petition circulated through Prairiewood that didn't want the roundabouts. So what we ended up built, we kind of created a quasi-fronted road there for those driveways right at Thirty-Second Street. We did just the intersection there in two thousand six, I believe. And the bumpouts went with that project. And that was, you know, the underpass was completed in either oh-one or oh-two to go underneath. So we've been pretty context-sensitive with this study. We filled up the meeting room in the basement of the mall at our first meeting. I was shocked by how many people showed up based on other public meetings that we have. So people are still very sensitive to what happened twenty years ago down there. And I, you know what? I want to, I want to build a project that makes sense and makes people happy. So context-sensitive. But the street department has done an overlay in there just to have the pavement smooth from Twenty-Fifth to like Thirty-Fifth in the last year or two. In fact, it might have been last fall.
And just a small other comment or question, you know, because it has been controversial over the years, the underpass and the other work, traffic has been a concern. When you did your study and you surveyed the area, the neighbors, did you ask them a question whether they're willing to pay for part of this, i.e. special assessments? Or is it just, what do you, what would you like to have?
So we did bring up, I mean, that's always, you know, everybody wants to talk about the special assessments. And so we did present what the typical special assessment would be before we asked them to vote on what solution they'd like. And so the one thing we had going for us is by trying to keep these solutions, you know, cost-sensitive, by keeping them within the curbs, it kept the cost per drilling unit as low as we possibly could. But certainly, we did present that information before they were able to vote.
Would it help us if people know how much the cost? Any other discussion?
Hot topic right now.
Yeah. So you just needed the study. You don't need anything for us, or do you need us to approve?
Well, I just wanted to get this in front of you. Don't want to have you a forced approval of it. So you can have two to four weeks to think about it, and we'll be back. Might probably won't come the second time, but if you have any questions between now and when it comes back...
Then it's an opportunity for the public to weigh in if they want to contact their commissioners on Seventeenth.
Yes. Yeah, because like I said, this has been, this has been very sensitive to the folks down there. So I don't want to catch anybody off guard or put you guys, quit making a quick decision without being informed, so.
Very good. Thank you. Application for abatement or refund of taxes, four four seven seven, made by Robert Hill Law, representing shops at Osgood, Supervalue, four one five one Forty-Fifth South, requesting evaluation of two thousand eighteen to be reduced from six million nine hundred thousand to three million three hundred and six thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Denial recommended by Assessment Department, Ben Hushka, to explain.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is an application made by Robert Hill Law. It's a firm that basically specializes in property tax appeals. They've been filing quite a few in the western part of the state. And in this region, a lot of the big-box store appeals that have become popular among tax reps. They did come to you before and appealed the two thousand fourteen and two thousand sixteen value, asking for exactly the same value they're asking for here, three million three oh six, for a reduction of about three point six million dollars. You did deny their previous requests to adjust the value to that. They are, if nothing else, persistent. You'll see in the packet they sent with the application, it simply contained screenshots from the county tax system and ours. It contained no value analysis to support the value that they're asking for. On pages two through five of the information we provided you, we put together several breakdowns of our value, how it compared to sales of similar properties, competing properties. Our concerns are twofold. One, that the values we arrive at represent market value or what similar properties are selling for. And two, which is an item that can be appealed through abatement, is that our values are uniform. So we want to make sure that the value we have on the property under appeal is similar to the value we have on other competing properties. And we feel what we've provided you does show that. And we, in two pages, two through five, we have several breakdowns. We bracketed it by type of property, by age, by size. And we've arrived at, through those analyses, that indicates in one group, values of about a hundred and thirty dollars per square foot. That's what the sales indicated. That's total value divided by the building's square footage. Another breakdown was mean and median were very close at about a hundred and twenty dollars. One breakdown at about a hundred and eight dollars per square foot. Our current value on this property is a hundred and three dollars per square foot of building value. They are asking for a value at less than fifty dollars per square foot. So it isn't really realistic. Their recommended land value that they're asking for is five dollars a square foot. And you'll see on page two of six, the first group we have are land sales, and there wasn't a land sale as low as five dollars per square foot. In fact, they were, mean and median were right around ten dollars, which is our current land value. So if you have any questions on any of the information we've provided, I'd be happy to answer it.
No questions, Commissioners? Do I have a motion?
I have a question, Mayor. If I, I'm just curious, is this Hornbacher's part of their recent sale? Did this building sell, or is it selling now?
There was, there are seven parcels on that location, and all have transferred or sold from the previous LLC to the LLP now, as of June first, two thousand seventeen. There are three parcels that included the Hornbacher's. It was the Hornbacher's, the pad site with the bank out on Forty-Fifth Street, and then the larger parcel of the strip mall excluding that separate building at the end of the strip mall. Those three parcels, if you look at page two of six, where we show improved sales at the bottom of the page, that's that yellow highlighted transaction. And that was for just over twenty-two million dollars. They weren't allocated between the three parcels. It was the total price for the all three parcels, the Hornbacher's, the strip mall, and the bank. And our value for those three parcels is at fifteen million dollars, just over fifteen million dollars, or about eighty percent of the sale price. The Hornbacher's being a fairly large part of that, and the strip mall, of course.
And then Osgood, or Supervalue just sold out Colbert's. Does that have a price, or did the building's not part of that?
The building is, they are leasing that site, so.
So my question, and I'm not sure if I'm hearing this, twenty-two million's what they value it for. You value that combined package at fifteen million.
Correct.
So we're undervaluing it relative to the actual sale?
Several of our break, yes. And of course, we don't know all the details. Some of the other parcels on that site, our values were even lower than what we are on these three parcels. But we'd really need to dig into the details of the sale. We think the sales that we've shown you, that we compared in our analysis of other similar properties, we feel we probably are a little bit undervaluing it, certainly not to the tune of twenty percent as indicated by this particular transaction. But we're not, in fact, we don't even think that the applicant, the Hill Law Firm, is even aware of that sale because that usually, well, when you file an abatement, one of the questions on the abatement application is if there has been a sale of the property. And they did not indicate that they were even aware of the sale. So that's the probably lack of attention to detail on what they filed.
So is it conceivable that the property's sale might be more than we anticipated it would be, and their taxes could go up relative to the real market?
Well, we wouldn't necessarily single it out because it's sold to raise it up to the value of that transaction. We'd need to dig in. There could be other things that may have been included in that. They did, in the twenty-two million, they did indicate that about two and a half million, give or take, was personal property. But there could be other things with existing leases and so forth that we'd really need to dig into. But I guess the bottom line in this particular appeal, we don't feel that it warrants the reduction that the applicant is asking for.
Could I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to deny the application for abatement.
Second. Eric. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Number sixty-one, budget and time changes for the C-one Tiff District. Jim Gilmar to explain.
Thank you. This is a recommendation from the Finance Committee for budget changes and a delay in the closeout of the C-one Tiff District. You last addressed this about a year and a half ago, and so let me kind of give you an overview and explain what's happened since then. The background of this Tiff District is actually created way back in nineteen eighty to support the development, I believe, of the Dakota Building downtown. The plan was amended in nineteen ninety-nine to help finance the Island Park ramp. In July of two thousand seventeen, you approved four additional activities and, you know, planned to close out this Tiff District. The additional activities were repairs to the Island Park ramp, early purchase of the land under the Island Park ramp, some new parking control equipment at that Island Park ramp, and repairs to the ground transportation center. Since that time, we have undertaken work on the Island Park ramp repair. There's been two hundred and thirty-nine thousand spent to restore that, to get concrete cracks fixed. A new camera system has also been recommended. The subconsultant wasn't ready to bid that when we bid this last summer, but we expect them to be ready to bid that this spring. We need to get the plans soon and get them to our IS department to review. That's estimated at a hundred and forty thousand. We've contacted the banks and had an appraisal done for that land. Our city assessor had eleven dollars a square foot. Our appraisal came in at sixteen seventy-five a square foot. The banks countered and asked for twenty-seven dollars a square, twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents a square foot. We're not making much progress in our discussions with the banks right now. If no agreements are reached, that land sale would not need to be completed until two thousand twenty. We have a lease until two thousand twenty for that. And so what the city could do is put some of this money in escrow if it shows. The Island Park ramp equipment, we were able to move some equipment from the lot we had on Second Avenue, so we don't need to use that. The GTC parking repairs, we used a hundred and twenty-one thousand to fix cracks in the basement, to fix some of the surface concrete, and fix some center blocks in the stairwells. There's mechanical work, high-priority mechanical work that's still needed to ventilate the system. That's estimated at eighty-three thousand. We bid this last summer. We did not receive any bids. And kind of based on, I guess, the mechanical contractors also are all being busy, we thought we'd bid that early in two thousand nineteen. There's still high-priority structural repairs that need to be done to the GTC. When you look at the GTC, there's really three uses to the building. There's the underground parking, one hundred and eighty-five parking spots. There's a court building that sits on top of partly slab-on-grade, partly over the parking garage. And then there's a transit transfer building where people switch buses, again, partly over the parking, partly slab-on-grain. These structural deficiencies apply to kind of two areas. One is the deck that the buses drive on. They damage the genie joints and create cracks. In the past, we've used transit funds to fix that component of the building. In this case, we have a beam that's kind of tilted down, it's holding up the building that, you know, needs to be repaired. You know, should transit pay for part of it? Should parking pay for part of it? Should the general fund because of courts? That needs to be decided. I know I'm meeting with Mike Redlinger later this week to try to sort out what components of these repairs could be paid for from these different funds. So what happened since July? July of last year, two months earlier is the time when Ben has to send over the list of districts to Cass County. So he sent over the list prior to the decision to end the Tiff District. Because of that, the tax bills went out in December based on that May report, and the city collected in the spring of this year an additional two hundred and eighty-four thousand. When we kind of realized the land was much higher, the Finance Director decided not to send it out in May, wanted to really get some direction from the City Commission, try to sort out these projects. And so we're, you know, back here before you right now with, there's really two options. One is to simply close it out, and the money that has come in and the money that would come in next spring, that could be sent back to the county, and it would be distributed to the taxing jurisdictions. And the other is a recommendation of our Finance Committee is to take that money and pay for these additional costs in these, for these four activities. So the recommendation, and you see the recommendation in the two different budgets. One would be to increase the Island Park ramp repair budget to three eighty, which will allow us to do, pay for that camera system. Secondly, to increase the Island Park land purchase budget to seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, which is what our appraisal came in at, eliminate the need for that budget equipment, and to increase the budget for the GTC repairs to five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, keeping in mind that we've already spent a hundred and twenty-one thousand on repairs to the kind of parking floor and reserving eighty-three thousand for those mechanical repairs. That would leave three hundred and fifty-four thousand for the structural repairs. And depending on what option, what recommendation you pick, that would probably range, again, probably anywhere from six hundred thousand to nine hundred thousand, depending on how much money you want to put into that building. So that's the recommendation, is to delay the closeout of the C-one Tiff District until the obligation to purchase the land is complete and to increase the budget for those restoration costs to the Island Park ramp, the GTC parking garage, as shown in the attachment. Any questions?
Mr. Garrick?
So a year and a half ago, we voted to shorten this Tiff net early, correct?
A year and a half ago, we anticipated we were going to be paying off that land and that then the district would have to close.
Early, okay. And so now we're back, we're saying, no, let's extend it. Is that correct?
It's your decision tonight.
Yep. And I just want to point out to the Commission, this is a twenty-year Tiff now. It's a long time to not get a return on your investment from the taxpayers. And I really want to know, are the other subdivisions having a say in this one? If we extend it, do they have to approve that?
No.
And I would wonder what they would think about us taking hundreds of thousands of dollars out of their coffers to do our business. So... So to be really clear to the public, what a TIF is, instead of paying your property taxes, you pay it, and we take it and put it into a fund that we use for what we want, and the schools get nothing, the county gets nothing, the park board gets nothing, the airport gets nothing, and vector control gets nothing.
I, maybe I do want to clarify that one thing. When we made the amendment and added these activities in 2017, the school and the county was informed, and I didn't hear back from them. They have not specifically been informed about these budget changes.
Further discussion?
So just to confirm, this passes tonight, this is an end certain for this, this district?
The recommendation is to leave it open, but I think you need to make a decision between now and May. Do you want one more year to come in based on what these things cost? Or do you want it to end certain and direct the city assessor to not include it on next year's list?
Well, if we vote tonight to end it, is there enough in the TIF to pay for the costs that are, you've described?
Not all of the structural repairs, I guess, you know, there might, and we don't know what the land's going to be in 2020.
Even extending the TIF does not pay all the costs. We're still going to be short, and if you don't have the money from the TIF, you're going to have to take out of the general fund. The other issue we have is the land purchase price continues to climb, and we've talked about that Main Avenue is what's going on in Main Avenue, and the problem with that is if you're delaying the TIF to hopefully pay for that, you may be higher than the 700,000.
Yeah, I think once all these activities are completed, that you've approved in a plan, then by law, it would end once these things are all completed. And we have to complete the land in 2020, so that, you know, it could go two more years at most.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious, with Mr. Grinberg's earlier questions about the left hand and the right hand talking to each other about the GTCs, are we having the same question here, where we put that away for two, two weeks to hear more of the bigger picture, and now we're talking about a few hundred thousand dollars to the ground transportation center? It's, it's, is there any difference in these issues, or?
Different areas that they're doing. Jim, you want to explain the difference between what the previous grant and this is?
I mean, I think, you have a grant that can be held for two weeks. The Kentwood Finance Department would really like a decision for the end of the year because they've brought this money in in 2018, and they need to, really make a decision, do we, are we going to keep it or send it back prior to the end of the year? And you don't have another meeting by, by the end of?
The secondary question is, the first part, when we have the discussion about the federal money, is that money for different things on this parking garage in, in, in the bus area? Is that money different, the grant money is on different elements of the repair?
I think the grant money could be used to replace the genie joint because the buses drive on that and, and damage it. And we've used federal transit money in the past to repair that genie joint, and so I think that would be eligible. You know, transit may disagree, they may want to spend it on other things.
Mr. Strand.
As I heard Commissioner Grinberg's question when it was presented, it was, is our, is our action in line with the future anticipated use of the buildings? And that, if, I think I heard that question, like, what's the future of the ground transportation center? And would we be investing, what would we be justifying putting lots, major investments in a future center that we may not agree the future is what it is? Is that, is that question relevant for this too, or no?
Yeah. Maybe I think it is. It's certainly, you know, repairing these cracks, if we're going to use the building even another 10 years, we should be making these structural repairs. And I don't think there's any money available in the next 10 years to replace, you know, the building.
We don't, we don't have $10 million on our budget right now to replace the facilities. The question, the commissioner's, Commissioner Grinberg's question, is what are we ultimately going to do with the building? Good, good question, and, and that's what I hope to get over the next two weeks. Matt, did you want to say something?
Yeah, just, um, the, the grant for the 1.59, that money is specifically for a grain at GTC. That goes back to the municipal court thing. We do have a call scheduled, Julie and I, with NDDOT on Thursday? On Thursday to ask if we can use any part of that money to help repair that beam. So, because we did talk with Mike and Bruce, and we said, you know, we can reach out to NDDOT, ask if any part of that money would cover that beam, but that call isn't scheduled till this Thursday. We couldn't get it until then.
But the Commissioner Grinberg concerned, your money is separate. If we were able to utilize anyone as part of the federal grant?
Yes.
Then we could do, end our TIF sooner because then we wouldn't need the money for the, from the TIF.
Right. We just don't know if we can use that money for this yet.
Okay.
But we are working on it.
Any other discussion or questions?
Well, I'm, Mr. Chairman, I'm.
Commissioner Grinberg.
Following this along, I just, I'm somewhat in line with Commissioner Garrick. You know, we had a decision prior, and now we're back tonight. And then, you know, any decision we make tonight should put a closure on this if that's what we need to 2020. I prefer we don't have to come back and make decisions on this again. We set this as a firm decision tonight and, and not have to deal with it again from a standpoint of this, this TIF. And I have some additional information I'd request after we're debating this moat or this topic, but relate to the broader context of TIF districts. But if I heard you right, Jim, you said, well, the future meeting at the commission could decide what to do. I'd be more comfortable making that decision tonight if we, you know.
Yeah, I think this leaves it, if you approve the recommended motion, the city assessor would include this TIF district on next year's list, and, you know, unless we were to wrap things up by May, which is unlikely. And so if you'd rather, you know, end it for certain in May of next year, then you should probably make a different motion that would direct that.
Well, again, we're, we're trying to address needs with what you're presenting tonight, and if we have addressed those needs and we can accomplish that by, where's Ben? Spring of '19 for the year '20? I guess, I don't know how the years sync together, but whatever our decision tonight should be also to close this and not leave it open. Because I think that's the expectation we made when we dealt with this issue.
Yeah.
Last year. And I don't want to deal with it again. I mean, that's personal opinion. We should make a decision and move on.
I mean, I think we, we could come up short on the land purchase in 2020, but then we would have to look at other resources for that.
How much is a TIF worth yearly?
Pardon me?
How much is a TIF worth yearly?
About 266,000 is budgeted for.
So you have 266,000 sitting there. You're going to get another 266 theoretically in 2020 if we close out in 2020. So your total will be 500 and something?
Yeah, if we let it run, run two more years, that would be another 500,000. I think that's.
That would shut it out, but we still would be lacking funds to buy it.
Well, we got, if we had two more years, I think that would certainly more than cover it, and then any remaining funds would be sent back to the taxing jurisdiction.
You're not, you're not going to cover the cost to buy in that building. You're at 700 right now, this is 550. You can't, you can't buy the land now, Jim.
Yeah.
You can't buy it unless you extended the TIF for four years.
Well, I, I mean, I think they have to sell the land in 2020, and we may end up in court debating the price.
So Commissioner Grinberg makes a motion that you extend it in '20, and then you're done with it, his motion would be just after that. We're not taking it anymore. We may be short.
I, yeah, I'm not sure if I understand, Commissioner Grinberg, your wishes or suggestions?
I, I'm going to, if I may ask, Eric Johnson, his opinion on this discussion?
I'm sorry, ask me what?
Your opinion, legal opinion, or is this?
Yeah, I mean, you, I, I took a look at it, and again, referring back to your July 2017 decision, I think that just the change circumstances, and this is not a substantial change to it. You're still closing out the same, the same TIF with the same objectives in mind, it's just that the, again, some changes occurred since then. So this is a minor, relatively minor revision, can be handled with this motion, in my opinion.
But Eric, if we wanted to cover all the costs that the TIF could cover, could it be extended two to three more years?
Yeah, I mean, yes, the TIF can continue until the, the projects are, and the debt is paid.
And that would more likely with the costs you see in front of you, be four years. So if Commissioner Grinberg wants to end it out, so we're done with it, we might be short. Is that correct?
Possibly, yes. Depends on the amount, correct? It's a little bit of an unknown.
This is kind of a fuzzy area. I don't know if our policy decision on TIF ending should drive our ultimate negotiation with buying a piece of property. If it ends up, we have 600,000, and we have to buy it for 900,000, I think we could find $300,000 if that's what we needed to do. So I'm, I'd be more say, let's set in a date and then be done with it, and then deal with the purchase price and the, the market conditions as a separate matter, because to, to just allow this TIF to hang there and negotiate 2020, 2021 just doesn't feel right to me.
I'm not debating that, but the cost here, well over a million, a 266 TIF, it won't cover those. So the issue, it's just a matter of intent was to use TIF money to pay off all expenses considered with this project. So not debating with you how you want to handle it, but on the last page, I see a cost well over a million dollars, and the 266 will not generate enough money to pay off all those concerns. Your hard cost, Jim, from here until we're done, write down to your best estimate, what's the total?
I mean, depending on how much you want to put in the GTC, the, I mean, the minimum is that 1.66, and that would cover a land at 728, which is our appraisal, which, you know, we believe is a fair price. It would provide 350 likely for the structural repair, coupled with the transit grant, I think we might be okay, we might be 100, $200,000 short.
Do we have other sources of funds for the GTC other than to bake it into this deal?
The general fund, you know, the Parking Repair and Replacement Fund right now is not, not adequate to pay for all of the structural repairs to the GTC, nor, you know, should...
I'll take a crack at this, Mr. Chairman. I'd move the recommended motion with the amendment that this expires in 2020.
Sir, second.
I'll second it, but I have a couple of comments. I, I just think that the thing that's disappointing is, so this is in 2017, and so some of these costs, I mean, we knew that we were going to have to buy the, buy the land eventually, and I, anyway, that's what's a little bit disappointing to me. I, we're, it's, it's kind of like when you talk about special, it's still going to be a bill. We're going to have to pay for it somehow, whether we get it out of TIF or not, and so that, that's, that's the thing that bothers me. I do think the negotiation for buying the property, that, that's going to be a challenge because I think we're, we're far apart with the banks, and so I, I would much rather have, with this way, if we leave the TIF intact, we have money for the buyout. If we, if we go with just ending the TIF, then we're going to have to find the money someplace else. Isn't that a good summary? So.
Mr. Garick.
My fear is, though, is that if we can just extend a TIF after we already shortened it, this can be an indefinite TIF. Why would you ever get rid of a revenue stream? Because there's always going to be needs, right? The GTC's always going to need money. There's always going to need this or that. So what we're telling the people of Fargo is, is that, yeah, we'll, we'll end it this year, don't worry about it. Ah, shoot, we got more money to spend, we'll keep it for two more years. This isn't going to be on the books by the time I'm not a commissioner anymore. You know what I mean? So that, that's my concern, and it's not grant funds that we're getting from the federal government or some, or some nebulous, you know, thing like that. We're taking actual property tax dollars that are not going to schools and parks and the county, and vector control, and the airport, and that's real dollars. So where the money come from matters, and the amount matters, and how we handle the TIFs matter. I mean, now we're just extending them through after just talking about it for 20 minutes. So I'm certainly not for it.
Mr. Strand.
I'm, I'm curious about the implications of a, of a, of a July deadline, when we've already voted to end this and that deadline is up in the air and changing in front of us. How, and how firm would that July date be versus the one we've already a year and a half ago voted on to end? I mean, we've already, you know, decided that. I'm, I'm not opposed, I'm just curious, would it mean anything, or is it, is it a for sure deal that it ends in July, or, or are we going to come back and say, hey, folks, we, we can't end it yet?
Well, I would say what is July deadline would be firm, as you would have to put it in the budget. So Bruce Scrub, I'll have you come up, but my, my feeling, John, is if they're still short and you're going to end the TIF, then you're going to have to decide how you're going to cover that cost. So, and July is the time we do the budget anyway, so it would be something that would be before them. If the TIF does not have enough power after May of next year to generate enough funds to carry the cost, where do we find that? General fund?
Well, I'm not sure where we would find it as I stand here today, obviously, but we'd have to look for some other possibilities, certainly, because the TIF wouldn't be sufficient to be able to do these things. So, yeah, we'd have to look elsewhere. But I don't know what the answer to that is today, no.
So in the past, when the commissioner has faced with this issue that John's bringing up, is that the idea was to handle our expenses, the expenses got more expensive. Just for, in the future, I guess would be important that we're informed, hey, there's been some changes here, and come back to the commission for permission to extend something in the future. It just seemed that we should do that. And to John's question, if we're out of money for all the repairs or the boss to the land, we would have to figure something out, right?
We have to look for other sources, yes.
So, so bear with me, I'm learning, but the TIF was intended for this originally, correct? For, for this whole array of?
I mean, the, there've been sort of three phases of this TIF. First was for an urban renewal project between 1980 and 1999, from 1999, then the Island Park ramp was added, and then a year and a half ago, you added some other things related to parking, directly related to the Island Park ramp, the land purchase, primarily other things related to the Island Park ramp. The GTC happened to be in the TIF district, and so that was an added activity.
It still gets bigger and gets longer and bigger and longer.
Any other questions or discussion?
So the motion before us is to accept the recommended motion, but put a time certain on it at 2020. And I have one question. If we don't buy it, who would?
Well, I mean, nobody's going to, you know, the banks are own it. Our agreement is, I think, relative to their inclined, they have to sell us the land. We have a parking ramp on it that we're leasing, the lease is up, we want the land. That would be my.
And again, I.
We'd go to court for two appraisers.
And this, go either way, and I'm, I'm fine with that, but for me, it just seems that we shouldn't use TIF policy to keep going to get enough money to buy something. We should just be firm in closing the TIF and deal with the consequences financially when that time comes. And, you know, we've done a lot of things at City Commission in budget year or out of budget year by finding money, and we're not talking millions of dollars here, we're talking eight, six, $800,000 on top, ought to be accumulated.
Yeah, we're just, we're not in a position where we can force the banks to sell us the land this year, but we can in two years, so.
So.
So we have a motion, a second, discussion, Commissioner Strand.
I, I'm in favor of the spirit of the motion, it's the deadline that I'm wrestling with. So when I, that's my concern at the moment, is that July deadline relative to the bigger picture.
And the reason you're concerned about the deadline is that you'd have the opportunity to extend it if you need to?
Well, we've already extended it, and I guess my sense is if the TIF is in place to address these needs, we let it do what it's supposed to do. I don't know that I want to go to the general fund for something that was intended to be a TIF.
I think if you, if you, Commissioner Grinberg's motion, as I read it, would bring in two more years of TIF money, another half million, and I think that would be adequate.
Roll call vote.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
No.
Garrick?
No.
Mahoney?
No.
Mayor, I move the recommended motion.
Is there a second?
Same motion, but without the deadline?
Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second it.
You got to do something.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on this motion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
No.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
I do have a request, Mr. Chairman, of, at a meeting, maybe sometime in the first part of the year, February, March, for Jim to come back with a report on TIF districts to include the beginning year of the TIF district, eighth year property value and current property values, fund balances, outstanding obligations, anticipated 2019 revenue, list of activities to be implemented in the future, and the cost, and the expected year that the TIF district can be closed.
Would you like that in a formal report to the commission? Do you want a brown bag?
No, I'd like to have it presented to the commission.
Okay. How many TIF districts are there?
Maybe 20?
Okay. Good, sounds reasonable. Good time for us all. Last item is item 62. We had a discussion with the commission about Christmas Eve, and Joe... We had a discussion with the commission about Christmas Eve, and Joe and Matt did a nice review and did a survey, came to the recommended motion of just close city departments at noon on December twenty-fourth. Basically, in talking to department heads, a lot of people have already made recommendations in staffing and other things for the twenty-fourth, so it'd be somewhat disruptive if we gave the whole day off, but I feel that trying to honor some of what the state is doing, if we'd closed at noon, it'd be no cost to the city of Fargo, and it would give a time off for people to travel or such that night, so. If you want Joe to come forward to give a report, or?
Move, suggest motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Gary?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Now, Commissioner Strand has one thing. He'd like to have a final word here just before we have the holidays, which is wish everybody a happy holiday, but, Mr. Strand, you're on.
You know what that is. You do, don't you? Yes, I do. It's Commissioner Grinberg's birthday coming up, the twenty-first, so we should all be thinking of him that day, and two days before that, Bruce Scrub, the nineteenth, so happy birthday. Are you going to be fifty-nine? Last one before sixty, and you're going to be plenty-nine? Happy birthday, you guys.
Would you like us to sing to you guys? No? Is the motion to adjourn?[1795.53]